Keep this out on the computer screens.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the regular meeting of the Tuckerton Borough Council this June 16, 2025. Madam Clerk, would you please read the Open Public Readings Act statement?
Yes, provisions of the Open Public Readings Act have been complied with as noticed was published in The Beacon and the Asbury Park Press stating the time, date, place of this meeting.
Thank you. Roll call, please. Mr. Breland?
Here.
Mr. Martin?
Here.
Mr. Colangelo?
Here.
Mr. Deamore?
Here.
Mr. Dupree?
Here.
Mr. Peterson?
Here.
Mayor Marshall?
Here.
Thank you.
All right, please stand for the flag, Sue.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we are going to have a special presentation, and we're going to do that first this evening. Councilman Pearson, would you please read?
Now, thank you, Your Honor.
Resolution.
I'm going to read a resolution to appoint an officer to the lieutenant position, which I feel is very deserved. With that being said, a resolution of the Borough of Tuckerton, County of Ocean State of New Jersey, appointing Joseph Caputo as lieutenant for the Borough of Tuckerton Police Department. I move this resolution.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and I have seven seconds, six seconds. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Breland?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Colangelo?
Yes.
Mr. Deamore?
Yes.
Mr. Dupree?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, let's do it. Take pictures. And we're going to move around here so that we can opportunity. Aye, and state your name.
Aye, Joseph Caputo.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And the governments established in the United States.
And the governments established in the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly perform.
And justly perform.
All the duties of the office of police lieutenant.
All the duties of the office of police lieutenant.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me go.
So help me go. Now, let's take some pictures. All right, well, come on, Dad. Hey, Liz. Come on, Aunt Sandy. We'll do pictures. Sorry, guys, just bear with us, I promise we'll be done soon.
Tony, you coming?
Tony said no. You good?
Yeah.
Dad, you want to get one, just us?
Sure.
Okay, well, come on. Why, why don't you stand there? Go.
I'm going to say more times.
So our audience, half our audience just left, but it was wonderful. I'm so proud of you. Okay, is everyone ready to go on?
Yes, ma'am.
Anyone here to? Okay, very good. Let's go on to number six, legislation, Councilman Breland.
Thank you, Mrs. Mayor. Tonight I have a resolution renewing the seven liquor licenses in town. The seven licenses are Fort Doyle's, Porthouse, Break Fine, Doc's Side Cafe, Mickey's Port Paul, Danny's Diner, Redman's Lodge, and Tuckerton Liquors. So I have a resolution of the Borough of Tuckerton County of Ocean State of New Jersey authorizing the renewal of liquor licenses for the 2025-2026 license in year, and I so move this resolution. Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second on this resolution. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Breland?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Colangelo?
Number six abstain all of them, yes.
Mr. Deamore?
Yes.
Mr. Dupree?
Yes, with the exception of number six, Pohat and Blood, I must abstain.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Thank you.
And that's all I have this evening, ma'am.
Okay, fine, thank you very much. Next, we have Finance Councilman Martin, he gets, he gets some kind of a prize, too.
I have nothing this evening.
Good, everything.
I have, I have three first readings, or I have first readings of three different ordinances tonight, and five resolutions I'll be going through. So the first ordinance is going to be ordinance number five of 2025, and that is for the trash truck bond ordinance. This is just the first reading. The second reading will be at our next meeting on July 21st, and at that time, we will open for public comment. So, I have ordinance number five of 2025, an ordinance of the Borough of Tuckerton and County of Ocean State of New Jersey providing for acquisition of a trash slash recycling truck and appropriating $330,000 therefore, and providing for the issuance of $313,500 in bonds or notes of the Borough of Tuckerton to finance the same, and I move this on first reading. Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second on this ordinance as presented. Roll call vote, please.
Could you give us date of the second reading?
Yes.
Sorry.
July 21st.
Thank you. Mr. Martin? Or Mr. Breland, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Colangelo?
Yes.
Mr. Deamore?
Yes.
Mr. Dupree?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, again, second reading will be July 21st, and we'll have public comment at that time. Next is ordinance number six of 2025, and this has to do with our rules and regulations pertaining to garbage collection within the borough. So this one is specific to garbage collection. The main changes to our old ordinance are that garbage can lids will need to be closed completely on the garbage can, they can't be open overflowing with trash. Any violations to that can now carry a penalty for our first, a civil penalty for the first offense being $150, second offense of $250. Again, this is just first reading. Second reading will be on July 21st, and will be open to public comment at that time. I have ordinance number six of 2025, ordinance of the Borough of Tuckerton County of Ocean State of New Jersey amending and supplementing chapter 223 of the Borough Code of the Borough of Tuckerton entitled Solid Waste, so as to revise the rules and regulations pertaining to garbage collection within the Borough of Tuckerton, and I move this on first reading. Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second on this ordinance as presented for our first reading. Roll call vote, please. Mr. Breland?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Colangelo?
Yes.
Mr. Deamore?
Yes.
Mr. Dupree?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next ordinance is ordinance number seven. This one has to do with the recycling regulations, but it is very much along the same lines of the trash. The trash ordinance that we're doing carries the same penalties for the violations. Tight fitting lid is the new update, but for the actual rules and regulations, I encourage people to also visit our website, The Public Works has a list of all the recycling about, like not having in plastic bags, what is recycling, what is not recycling, to make sure that you're, you're doing it properly. I have ordinance number seven of 2025, ordinance of the Borough of Tuckerton County of Ocean State of New Jersey amending and supplementing chapter 223 of the Borough Code of the Borough of Tuckerton entitled Solid Waste as to update recycling regulations, and I move this on first reading. Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second on this ordinance number seven as presented. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Breland?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Colangelo?
Yes.
Mr. Deamore?
Yes.
Mr. Dupree?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Thank you.
And again, second reading of all three of those ordinances will take place at our July 21st meeting right here, and we will open to public comment before voting. Next, I have a resolution for the payment of claims for this month. This month, the borough is sending out $724,487.10. I wanted to point out the Ocean County Utilities Authority in the amount of $152,322.50, and then also the June Tuckerton Elementary School levy for $332,705.38. So I have a resolution of the Borough of Tuckerton County of Ocean State of New Jersey authorizing payment of claims in the amount of $724,487.10, and I move this resolution. Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second on this resolution. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Breland?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Colangelo?
Yes.
Mr. Deamore?
Yes.
Mr. Dupree?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Thank you. My next resolution is for a community block grant, asking to have it be able to be inserted into the 2025 municipal budget for the sum of $40,000. So I have a resolution of the Borough of Tuckerton County of Ocean State of New Jersey authorizing a chapter 159 for the fiscal year 2024 community development block grant for CDBG for the 2025 municipal budget, and I move this resolution. Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second on this resolution as presented. Roll call vote, please. Mr. Breland?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Colangelo?
Yes.
Mr. Deamore?
Yes.
Mr. Dupree?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Thank you.
Along the same lines, I also have another one for the calendar year for the alcohol education and rehabilitation grant, seeking to insert $1,134.83 into the 2025 budget. I have a resolution of the Borough of Tuckerton County Motion State of New Jersey authorizing a chapter 159 for the calendar year 2025 alcohol education and rehabilitation grant for the 2025 municipal budget, and I move this resolution. Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second on this resolution as presented. Roll call vote, please. Mr. Breland?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Colangelo?
Yes.
Mr. Deamore?
Yes.
Mr. Dupree?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Thank you. My next resolution is for dedication by rider for the Tuckerton Environmental Commission. This will make it so that the Environmental Commission will have a designated fund where they can collect money to be used for all their doings with, you know, in the capacity of the Environmental Commission such as plant and to rent town, cleaning up, that kind of stuff. I have a resolution of the Borough of Tuckerton County Motion State of New Jersey requesting approval of a dedication by rider in accordance with NJSA 40A:4-39 for the acceptance of donations and appropriation of the same for the Tuckerton Environmental Commission, and I move this resolution. Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second on this resolution as presented. Roll call vote, please. Mr. Breland?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Colangelo?
Yes.
Mr. Deamore?
Yes.
Mr. Dupree?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
And I hope I said Environmental Commission the first time, because when I replay, okay, I was like, I didn't know if I said economic development. Today, okay, perfect. For my final resolution, I have a resolution canceling excess charges for water and sewer for 2025. This is for a total of seven properties within the borough. I have a resolution of the Borough of Tuckerton County of Ocean State of New Jersey to cancel excess water and sewer charges for the year 2025, and I move this resolution. Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second on this resolution as presented. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Breland?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Colangelo?
Yes.
Mr. Deamore?
Yes.
Mr. Dupree?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
And then, Mayor, that is all I have until committee reports.
Okay, fine, thank you very much. Did a great job on that. All right, next is Public Works, Water and Sewer, Council, Colangelo.
Thank you, Your Honor. Four resolutions I will read this evening will have to do with the purchase of two new vehicles, who will authorize a purchase of a side loader, purchase of a chassis, and then the purchase of three containers. Just a reminder, Public Works Yard is closed Friday, June 20th and Friday, June, or July 4th. I have a resolution of Borough of Tuckerton County of Ocean State of New Jersey awarding a state contract for the purchase of one 2025 Ford F-350 and one 2025 Ford F-250 truck to Winters Ford. The borough is in need of these two vehicles for our water and sewer department, and Winters Ford submitted the contract bid in the amount of $58,914 for the F-350 and $60,792 for the F-250, and I move this resolution. Second.
All right, I have a motion, a resolution that was read, and a second, roll call vote, please.
Mr. Breland?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Colangelo?
Yes.
Mr. Deamore?
Yes.
Mr. Dupree?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Captain Colangelo, before you start the next two resolutions, I got a little overzealous, and I typed up my stuff and got it all ready, and technically, we should not be doing these two resolutions until the next council meeting, because that's when the bond ordinance would be adopted. So that's my fault on getting it on the agenda quicker than I thought it should be.
Two officials, July.
Yeah, I, I know, just getting, pumping this stuff out. So I'm asking that you table the two resolutions until the next council meeting, the purchase of the chassis and the purchase of the, the actual.
Recycling.
Side loader, yes.
Okay.
Please.
Current structure, the next two resolutions are tabled. Last resolution is resolution of Borough of Tuckerton County of Ocean State of New Jersey awarding a contract for the purchase of two 30-yard containers and one 10-yard containers. Waste Quip submitted the lowest price in the amount of $14,051, and I move this resolution. Second.
It's root, root code, you said Waste Quip, did you?
Waste Quip.
Quip, submitted.
It's red code.
It is red code.
Did you say it right?
Red code.
Okay.
Did I say it wrong?
It's red code.
That's a flyer. I move the resolution. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on this resolution as presented. Roll call vote, please. I have to say that.
Mr. Breland?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Colangelo?
Yes.
Mr. Deamore?
Yes.
Mr. Dupree?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
That's all I have, thank you.
All right, thank you. Now, moving on to public buildings and grounds and community affairs, Councilor Deamore.
Thank you, Mayor. I have one resolution this evening. This resolution is for a submission of a grant application to the New Jersey Department of Transportation. Resolution of the Borough of Tuckerton County of Ocean State of New Jersey authorizing the submission of a grant application and execution with the New Jersey Department of Transportation for the Cedar Street, Cox Avenue, and Parker Road roadway preservation project in the amount of $457,038. I move second.
All right, I have a motion and a second on this resolution as presented. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Breland?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Colangelo?
Yes.
Mr. Deamore?
Yes.
Mr. Dupree?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
That's all I have.
Okay, all right.
Fine.
Nice to have something, huh? That you're going to read, you got money to talk about. All right, moving on to number 10, administration and regulation, Councilman Dupree.
Your Honor, I have three items for this evening, the first being the approval of the minutes of the May 19th, 2025 meeting and executive session. Any council person have any additions, corrections, or admissions that they have found? They're being done. I so move that we accept the minutes as written. Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to accept the minutes as presented. Roll call vote, please. Mr. Breland?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Colangelo?
Yes.
Mr. Deamore?
Yes.
Mr. Dupree?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes. And second item, Your Honor, I have from Tuckerton Construction and Code Enforcement Office onsite inspections were 21 violations, notices set were seven, whole cabin inspections were two, open violations were five. We had two clear violations, open requests, two. Public Works cleanup, we had one. Calls, home orders were 22, and CO inspections were one. As far as the permits that were issued, construction were 44, rental were five, resale was six, and zoning were 13. And that concludes the code enforcement and construction report for this past month. And at this time, I'd like to call forward Lieutenant Alyssa Chapman from Parkertown Fire and also Squad 85. They have a EMS and fire report.
Hi, Woody, I'm Lieutenant Alyssa Chapman from Parkertown Fire Company. So the Parkertown Fire Company has responded to 10 fire calls and 21 EMS calls in Tuckerton in May of 2025. On May, May 31st, we attended a meeting with the residents of Paradise Cove, and then the Fire Company reinstated a junior fire rate program, and it's going to be promoted for the kids to sign up. The program is designed to lead interested individuals into a career path in the fire and EMS service.
All right, thank you very much.
Thanks a lot, dear.
Thank you.
Much love.
Thank you.
And that's all I have, Your Honor.
All right, well, fine, that's very good. I hope you all go back to law and public safety, Councilor Peterson.
Hi, Your Honor. I have the monthly activity report for the police department for May 2025. Calls for service were 281, the rest were 12, motor vehicle stops were 165, motor vehicle summers were 89, motor vehicle accidents were 13, medical was 31, and suspicious person in a vehicle checks was 30. And that's all I have, Your Honor.
All right, fine, thank you very much as well, and let's see. I know that when we get down to committee reports, Councilman, Councilman Bryan is going to talk about the Fourth of July in the conference, so I'm going to leave that, and go on to Mr. Connors, do you have anything this evening?
I have nothing.
Nothing? Okay.
So, Mayor Cook, I have a few things this evening. First thing I have is a bingo application for the Church of the Holy Spirit. They are going to be doing weekly, every Friday, bingos at the church beginning August 1st, 2025, and it will be from 5:00 to 9:00 PM, and they're requesting waiver of fame.
I made that motion.
Second.
Okay, motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Breland?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Colangelo?
Yes.
Mr. Deamore?
Yes.
Mr. Dupree?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
The next one I have is a solicitation request for charitable, it's called charitable solicitation request for Route 9 and 539, in order for the county or the state to allow for anyone to be in the roadway to do like a coin drop. The town has to approve it first, per ordinance. Parkertown Fire Company is requesting that they are allowed to go out and solicit funds at the corner of Route 9 and 539 on the decoy show weekend, which would be September 27th and 28th.
I made that motion, I'll circle it.
Okay, your motion and a second on this request. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Breland?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Colangelo?
Yes.
Mr. Deamore?
Yes.
Mr. Dupree?
I'm staying.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
The other thing I have is authorizing the approval of the fireworks for July 4th over the Tipton County Park. So usually, that's done by resolution, but it's usually resolution of Borough of Tuckerton County, Ocean State of New Jersey authorizing the display of fireworks for the 4th of July.
I circle it.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second on this presentation. For this request, roll, roll call vote, please.
Mr. Breland?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Colangelo?
Yes.
Mr. Deamore?
Yes.
Mr. Dupree?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
I think that is everything that I have.
Okay, that's it.
Yep, that's it. Yep, that's it. All right, very good. Thank you very much. Uh, so now we'll go to your committee report.
Uh, yes, so committee reports, Pride and Celebration. Um, we have the Tuckerton summer concerts all lined up. Uh, we have six concerts scheduled for this summer on Friday nights at six-thirty. They're gonna be held at the All Wars Memorial Ball Field over on Bay Avenue. Um, we did get, we did get the lineup out on social media. It is also on the Borough website. Uh, if you go to committees, to Pride and Celebration, and then to events, it has it there. Um, so again, that'll be every Friday starting July eleventh. We're not doing one on July fourth. Um, but starting July eleventh, they will be over at the All Wars Memorial Ball Field. The stage is, I'd say, ninety-five percent of the way finished. Um, it turned out very nice. Um, he'll get mad, but Wayne, who happens to be my father, has been building these stages, uh, behind the church, and he's been working very, very hard. And, uh, I went over the other day and was jumping on him to test him out and test out his craftsmanship. Um, and between him and Bob Dara and the other people that have volunteered their time to put it together, it's, it came out very nice, and I think it'll work out very, very well over at the Ball Field. Um, so that is the, uh, Friday night concerts, and then for the finance Fourth of July fireworks committee, um, in addition to the, the fireworks being held at dusk on July fourth, uh, we're also doing the annual parade. I did get the permit to close Route Nine from, uh, ten A.M. to ten forty-five A.M. on July fourth, and that'll be closed from Marine Street down to Great Bay Boulevard for the parade. So, uh, the Fourth of July committee does have applications for anybody that is interested in being on the parade, or being in the parade. Um, if you'd also like an application, you can feel free to email me at, uh, BMartin@TuckertonBorough.com. I will make sure that you get an application. We already have about thirty people, uh, signed up to be in it, so it should be very good. Um, and then the last thing with the fireworks committee is they are selling fifty-fifty raffle tickets, um, for the Fourth of July. They're five dollars a ticket. Um, if we sell all the tickets, the grand prize winner would get seven hundred and fifty dollars. And I believe tickets will be at Doyle's Courthouse, and we'll also be walking around on the Fourth of July, um, selling the raffle tickets. And I think that is enough.
That's fine. We have a lot of little things to talk about, and, uh, we have to get the word out that the concerts are all set. And what's going on for the Fourth, because we won't be leaving. It's just a couple weeks away. All right, um, I guess one more. Yes.
Oh, I just wanted to mention that the, uh, you have some other stuff?
I, I did want to say the rain date for the fireworks, strident rain, it's not going to rain on July fourth, but strident, the rain date is July fifth. So it'll be the following, it's that Saturday night is the rain date. Sorry, I just.
That's okay. I just wanted to say that, uh, EDC is moving, uh, forward with the, uh, Chamber of Congress, and, uh, Chuck is one of our officers. I'm gonna ask you to get up and, can I just have the date on what's going on with it, if you don't mind?
Sure. I'm on my spot, but I'm used to it. Sam, thank you. Um, I'm really excited about that the EDC has now moved forward and informed the Chamber of Commerce, which is gonna allow us to do events, raise money, um, all kinds of things that, just as a committee of the Borough, we couldn't do as the EDC. Um, we have three trustees. Uh, I'm one of them, John Miller and Dave. Drawn a blank on his last name, but we're the trustees of it.
Schaefer.
Yes, and, uh, we, you know, we have a bank account, we have a, a website coming out soon, we're gonna be soliciting the businesses all to join it. And, um, from experience in my other town, it was a business association, not a Chamber of Commerce, but it's the same thing. It's something I've talked about for years here, trying to get together, and I'm really excited about it. Um, it's, it's moving forward. I know the mayor and several council members have been at a lot of the EDC meetings, and it's all is coming, and, uh, it's gonna be a really good thing. There's gonna be some great events we can have, there's gonna be a lot we can do to, um, bring economic development through the chamber to the council and to Medford, or to, uh, sorry, to Tuckerton. Stuck on my mind a little bit. To my second town here, which by the way, next, next year is gonna be fifty years that my family's been coming to, to, to Texas. So, in spite of me just slipping up and saying, Medford, uh, Tuckerton is very important to me and my family, so.
Medford Tuckerton Road, right?
Exactly, Tuckerton, that's how you get here, right? You come from Tuckerton Road, and, and so, um, yeah, it's, it's, it's gonna be a great thing. I'm really excited about it. And thanks for all the support of council for putting this together. Um, it's gonna be very good for the Borough. Thank you, Chuck. I appreciate that.
Thank you very much, Councilor.
I'd also like to say a couple words. First, I'm honored to have four members of the Environmental Commission here this evening. We have Beth, Debbie, Carolyn, and of course Paul. And Paul, uh, do you have a report you'd like to give from the, the meeting? That was the previous one.
Um, I wasn't really at the last meeting because Tom's away.
Right.
But, um,
Pushed you on the spot. Sorry about that, buddy.
That's all right. I've got a really cool pipe. Um, we were pushing for a bank account for a long time. Uh, we finally got it. That's gonna help a lot with, um, cleaning up downtown, the planners, they've raised money to buy stuff, plants, whatever, shovels rigs for the community garden, maybe even a better run of dollar than the one I donated. Um, it's, it's all good. They're, we're moving forward, okay, in a positive direction. That's basically all I have until we get to the homeowners part.
And we also have one slot open for the Environmental Committee.
Well, we're working on that because there's a environmental engineer in our neighborhood, and I've been talking with him. I've been trying to get him to join. I forward his information to Mike and Caitlin. They should be focusing, and we'll get, we'll get him on board. Thank you.
Wow, thank you.
Thanks, Paul. Appreciate that. That's all I have, Your Honor. Give me your voice.
Yep, okay.
I have something. Uh, we're at that time of year again where we face certain things. One of them are gnats, the other one, the green heads are coming, and we deal with it. However, it's the summertime in Tuckerton. We're gonna have traffic. It's already started. We have backups. I would just ask people to try to be considerate, be courteous, and don't think that the shoulder of a road is a passing lane to go around a vehicle that's turning left. There may be a pedestrian walking across the street you don't see. Please be mindful. Also, realize that most cars have brakes on them. You could use them. And for those people that have grass, uh, I don't think you need a reminder. You know it has to be cut. We do have code enforcement, so it's a process. Just be aware of things, and if everybody works together and shows a little bit of patience, I think we can get through this and make everybody happy without any injuries, accidents, whatever. Thank you.
And have a good summer. Awesome. Anyone else have any comments? All right, uh, I think we're ready for the public.
Move over to public forum, second.
All right, I have a motion and a second to open the public forum. Call in favor.
All right.
All right, I need a vote. I have to say that, but nobody is. So will I hear, uh, from you, uh, in the public? Yes, sir. Number one.
Hi.
Look at that, big blue one. Good boy.
My name is Andy Caviolo. I live at Seven North Forest Castle, North Forest Castle Drive. I've been a resident, uh, since seventy-six, before gambling. Uh, Brown was the sole police officer in the town. Neighbor. My parents became very friendly with him, and, uh, they had a lasting relationship with Cleveland, actually. So I've been a resident here for, for a long time, and, uh, I have a, I have a proposal, and, uh, I think, uh, maybe interesting. I have some handouts, and I'm gonna...
One time we needed.
That's what we have, and we're still voting.
It's on you.
That's this, and this is a petition.
For your.
There we go. Thank you.
This, this one, this one was yours. Just take them on, pass it. You're welcome. Okay, so I guess you could read along with me. You could read along with the, uh, uh, I wrote a letter to the Sandpaper. Do you want me to stand here or?
As long as the microphone is there, that way we can record you.
Okay. So I wrote a letter for the Sandpaper, and I'm gonna read it, uh, read it aloud to everybody. "I'm retired. I was shocked to hear about the low attendance at the town hall meeting, about the increase in school taxes in our Little Lake Harbor Township community. I guess people were just tired of arguing and were out of the way of the meeting. I own, I own a home off of Radio Road and State Seal Drive. I understand that taxes will be increasing by, in excess of eight hundred dollars per year for every home in my area. I have an idea. Now we have, the township make an adjustment on the law for allowing low-speed vehicles access to beaches, restaurant, cigar lounge, religious institutions. We are a golf course community, thanks to Atlantis Country Club back in the early seventies. This would be kind of like a communities in Florida. If this were to happen, you can drop your auto coverage and replace it with a hundred dollar a year golf cart insurance coverage." "Low-speed vehicles, LSV plates, do not exceed twenty-five miles per hour speed limit. They are also battery-powered with regular one-twenty-five volt outlet that does not require a large high-voltage plug, therefore saving thousands per year on insurance and fuel, therefore substituting a large property tax increase. And it's fun to drive. Uh, we're not in any rush. Those days are over." So I, I sent that to the Sandpaper, and they contacted me. They said, "We love you, love you. We'd like to print it." I said, "That'd be great. I would love, you know, more, more influence in the, in the town." So, we, I, what I did was I, I made up a sign that, uh, oh, let me, let me continue with my, my second. "I would like to propose a signage on Radio Road to Route Nine in two locations by McDonald's, Oak Lane, and Stewart, Stewart's down Great Bay Boulevard, and south on Radio Road to Grappling Point, the beach. My proposal is a sign with a permit attached to your windshield, like a beach pass, placed on your windshield, where you would pay a fee, as shown on a map, where you are permitted to drive your golf cart, LSV, in Little Lake Harbor, Mystic Island. Years ago, there used to be a racetrack behind the elementary school where there were, they would have race car, car races. The first for winning was five dollars, and the race would go to Stewart's. Does this sound familiar? It was the basis for the Mel's Drive-In in the movie American Gravedig. That's one of the reasons why I would like to include Route Nine, point three miles, which is currently has a speed limit of thirty miles an hour. If you refer back to my letter I submitted, insurance is under a hundred dollars. Actually, I'm paying seventy dollars for the year. I, uh, when I called in my insurance company, I said, "I have a low-speed vehicle. I'd like to be able to insure it." And they said, "Oh, seventy dollars. Is that for the month?" "No, that's for the year." I said, I, I, I was, I was shocked. "I would like to be able to go to my house of worship, restaurants, Acme Grocery Stores, Stewart's, and the Warf cigar lounge. I understand Route Nine is that, is part of, uh, New Jersey DOT, but with a proper plan, the Department of Transportation usually responds positively with the request of the local town. I'm going to include a possible sign and Route Nine map with your sticker. They will allow you to drive on proper signage roadways to Little Lake Harbor and Mystic Islands. And thanks. Let's rejuvenate this town." When I first came to Little Lake Harbor, I was, uh, I was, I was very excited. You know, everybody had waterfront, and they had boats, and it was, it was very exciting. And, uh, this is what, uh, this is, this is my, this was my sign, my sign that I, that I designed. The only thing I didn't design was a sticker that you would put on your windshield. But I, I, I figured I'd leave it up to, you know, the board and the two towns, Little Lake Harbor and, uh, and Tuckerton, to design it. Also, maybe it would have a number on it, and you would pay a fee. With this fee, you'd get the map and you'd be, and the sticker, you'd place it on your vehicle, and the town, we could make money out of this. I think it would be a great revenue-producing item. So the road restrictions, they can't, uh, uh, one of my, my handout here. "They, they can't be driven with, uh, on roads with speed limits exceeding twenty-five miles an hour unless a municipality or county grants permission for roads with speed limits up to thirty-five miles an hour." Municipal, municipal discretion. Municipalities and counties have the discretion to permit or restrict L, uh, LSV use on roadways within their jurisdiction. So in other words, obviously, uh, if this is a roadway that we use, you guys have the ability to grant permission for signage and, uh, and use, uh, on our, uh, not Route Nine and, uh, Radio Road. I also included a, uh, a copy of the petition that, uh, people who are interested, and also, this is a copy of Route Nine, uh, which is in front of Stewart's, and, uh, how great would it be to see these, uh, golf carts that are decked out? They look like thirty-four Chevys and go back in the old days, and, uh, pulling into Stewart's and, uh, and having a soda or whatever and like back in the old days. And, uh, so basically, that's my, uh, my little presentation, so.
Okay, so you have already presented this to Little Lake Harbor?
Yes.
Excuse me, and you live at Little Lake Harbor yourself?
Yes.
Okay, um, we would certainly need to, to check with Little Lake and see what they're doing. And then we'd have to turn it over to our police and, and see if there was any way that this might be
Possible.
Put into, uh, Tuckerton, so.
Yeah.
Thank you very much for this. Will we have your phone number?
Yes, my phone number's on there. I did a presentation on Thursday, and I said, "You think you could come down to Tuckerton, make the presentation in Tuckerton?" I said, "I would, I would love to." And, uh, so that's, that's why I'm here.
Okay.
Thank you very much for your time, and, uh, it's, you know, could be an interesting time in our, in our history.
And thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Anyone else this evening?
Hi there.
Hi.
Carolyn Keen, eighty-four Curlew. Um, just a reminder that this Saturday is our Fer and TVA's first concert up at Green Street Park. Um, the band is Go Rock Yourself. They're actually really, really good. They're really good. Um, and there'll be a pizza truck and an ice cream truck. We will be collecting money, taking donations, uh, for Tuckerton Food Pantry.
Can you stop? I wanna close.
We'll be closer. So I, next? Want me to start over?
No.
I don't want to start over. Keep going.
Um, pizza, I heard.
Okay, pizza, I pizza. Can we request that the porta-pots be cleaned, the trash be emptied, and we need access to the electrical panel?
Porta-pots get, uh, rotated out on, on Wednesdays, and the place gets, uh, cleaned every day. The park does, however, uh, our Public Works doesn't do the privatized, uh, porta-pots. I don't know what to say about that.
Yeah, 'cause they had in the past, which, so is there something we need to do differently? Do we need?
Let me, let me look into it. I don't mind going down.
Okay.
I want to ask you about access to the electric.
Mrs. Volz contacted John Fethanus today via email, and I think it's handled.
Okay, good.
And there's another porta-pot coming on Wednesday as well.
Thank you. Okay. Um, so that's it for the concert. Um, I have a question around Beth.
Um, I have a question around about Tucker Dean Creek. Is that with Sam, not, I'm sorry, with Anthony not here and Pete's passing, we haven't really gotten an update on what's going on with Tucker Dean Creek. Was the dredging ever done?
No.
Okay, I didn't think so, but would, why, the reason why.
Army Corps of Engineers, and I've reached out, uh, I think, three, maybe even four times, and I've got no response other than it is on, it's on their docket.
Is there anything we can do to bug them? I mean, and I don't mean we, I mean the we, from the community.
I don't really, I really don't think so. And they're, the Army Corps of Engineers, they think they're gonna go with what they're, they're happy.
That was supposed to happen before.
It was supposed to happen right at the start of COVID.
Yes, yes. So, 'cause people are west, you know, now on the side.
And I think instead of pushing everything back, I, this is just my personal opinion, but I think instead of pushing everything back, they took the stuff that they missed and said, we're gonna keep everything that we kind of had scheduled going as it is.
So it might not ever get done?
Uh, I wouldn't say that.
Wouldn't say that?
I mean.
And the reason why I ask is that when we were out painting the benches, I happened to look across the cove, and there was a huge mound of dirt that I never noticed there before. So, you know, I was talking to Bunny and my husband and Brian Peterson, I went, where, where did that come from?
They haven't given me any kind of an actual start date.
Yeah, well, I just, just wondering, did they do it? And so, but I don't know who, and I don't even know who owns that property there. But it's, like, it's, uh, what's the restaurant, the old Panini bag?
Oh, yeah, across from that.
It's across, across from the cove. And it's this, like, huge mountain of, it looks like yellow sand is what it looks like. So it just caught me by surprise, 'cause I've never seen it before.
Also, I'll reach out again to them to see if I can find.
Yeah, 'cause, and here on our TBA page, you see people on the west side are starting to ask, and, you know, they, so. Um, an update, I don't wanna call it a grant, 'cause I know it's not a grant, but the $4.5 million, again, thank you, thank you, thank you. Um, it's, it's, that's a congressional.
That was, it's a federal appropriation.
Federal appropriation, because somebody said, well, what good is it gonna do for the community? Well, it's gonna protect the community from flooding.
Protect the homes.
And all the infrastructure that's been put in down there, so. Uh, but then they said, well, what about, you know, what about us? What about the west side? And I know we have a lot of, we do have a lot of new residents in the beach that have and don't have a whole history.
In theory, it, in theory, it should protect the residents on the west side as well. The whole point of it is to take the energy out of the bay as it comes. More than likely, all that energy is coming from the northeast to the southwest in any kind of a storm like that. So with where it is on that Little Lake, it, the idea is to protect Tucker Dean Beach.
Okay.
Um, but, and like I said, water will come up, water will go down. But if you can take the energy out of the flowing water with the living shoreline and all that stone amendments.
It's gonna be great. Thank you.
It's better than without it.
Yes, so, but they are asking, and I know that, you know, a lot of these people that are asking, their, their names I don't recognize. So I, I just wanna make sure that I give the right information. Um, thank you to the police department. We've seen a bigger presence on Green Street. Um, uh, I know it's to protect the people, but I've only seen one dead turtle, so. Um, it was turtle season, too, December.
I pulled a dozen out of my pool filter, all still alive. I check it every morning and when I get home from work every day.
Must have them all at your disposal. It's not, especially out of this pave, people tend, but it's very nice to see a police presence down there, 'cause, you know, we do have a lot of people who walk, they walk their dogs, they ride their bikes. And people tend, because it's just such a straightaway, again, now that it's paved, but it's really, really nice to see that police presence, so thank you. And then last but not least, I saw a post on Facebook, on, under the Tucker Dean Fire Department, and just like that, I lost it, um, that, uh, the borough has settled a $35,000 lawsuit.
Mayor, I ask that the mayor, really have no comment on a reserve a few minutes after the public segment to address that particular issue.
So in private, or should I?
No, 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 for anybody here.
Okay, yeah, 'cause, uh, I just saw it, and I, you know, when you see something on Facebook, you never know.
Right. Yeah, I'll, I'll.
You know, okay. All right, and that's all I have, and hope to see you guys on Saturday. All right, before you go, Saturday, um, what time?
Seven.
Seven.
Is it Seabird's Pizza? Do you know? Do you know about that?
That's what was there Saturday.
That's, yeah, it's the yellow, night-gallon truck, I think. The yellow, it's usually who's.
I have to have a couple of conversations, uh, about, but they reached out about wanting to do some of the Friday evening concerts as well.
They do?
I just, I would love to have them, I just need to know the Galeries of what we need from them.
They do a really nice job. They actually bring down to Grappling Point to the new beach. They, it's also really lovely, too lovely. They actually circle around there, too, so it's nice, so you don't have to really pack a lunch, and you just go.
He does have a solicitation permit in the borough of Tucker Dean as well.
Yes.
And whoever coordinated the turtle patrol on South Green Street, my hat, your costume.
It's one woman.
Oh, okay, we have five kids out there with her.
Yes, she, you see her all the time. She was watching and waiting.
Her name?
I'm.
Your name is.
The turtle lady, that's what I go to, Mr. Peterson, it's the turtle lady. I do have her name in my phone somewhere, but it's just easier to remember, the turtle lady, she does a fabulous job. Okay, fine, all right, thank you very much.
Hi. Good evening.
How are you?
Sorry, um, Allison Bryant Swallow, 230 Wood Street. And this is kind of just a, a follow-up. We began, we began communicating with Code Enforcement Department, October 2024, filing complaint of 343 Wood Street. I don't have enough for everyone. Um, neglect of home maintenance, failing to remove ruins, repair structural ruins, lack of structural integrity, as well as placing resident and neighboring residents at risk of safety. There are ladders left on the roof, along with holes in the roof, with occasional tar paves, roof shingles falling off. The roof porch has detached from the home. You can see it's beginning October of 2024. Um, it's left untouched for over eight months. And these are just a few items that exhibit the environment of this residence. The home has not been maintained or neg, has not been maintained and neglected externally since we've resided adjacent to this home for 32 years. It's dilapidated, rundown, and crumbling, which places the owners and surrounding residents at risk of safety. Along with having this neglected home being unsafe, it can negatively impact property values and also risk creating a sense of neglect, neglect and decay in neighboring area. Um, I have about eight months of documents of, you know, correspondence with the Code Enforcement. And I'm really just following up. I'm here tonight to request the update, and what is, what happens with a home such as this that, as you can see the picture, I don't think anyone here would like that every single day of pulling out of your home and seeing that. So that's why we're here today.
This has been in the hands of Code Enforcement for quite a while.
Eight months, yes.
Mr. Connors, are we allowed to make any comments on?
Yes, you can, Mayor. Um, and I've had a conversation with Councilmember Dupree on this matter after our last, uh, council meeting, when it was brought up in public session about the conditions of that particular house. Um, I'm not sure exactly what the status is as of today, but the conversation is more along the lines of attempting to get services to the property owner in an effort to try and get these matters remedied without having to go through a legal process of having it condemned, which can be long and arduous and, and costly as well. Um, and so there was an outreach, as I understand it, to either friends or mem, family members to attempt to get the issue remedied. It was not certain as to whether the property owner might have been an individual that had some issues that, uh, beyond any kind of physical devastation, may be some issues of mental issues that might have prevented him or causing some of the delays. Um, obviously, we want to try and exhaust those, sit, that, um, scenario first. But there is a mechanism which the town can then pursue in order to get it. But it's not, it just doesn't happen in a day.
We understand.
But it is something the township is considering, doing, um, because if all else fails within a very short period of time, well, I have no, no other alternative, because which you characterize is absolutely true. I've seen pictures of it.
It's horrible.
I've not been there myself, but I saw pictures of it. It does create a health risk, uh, and it does create unrest in the community. I wouldn't, I wouldn't want to live next to it or have it in their neighborhood. You're absolutely 100% right. But what we were trying to do, obviously, is to avoid a situation where somebody's being put out on the street or, you know. And so that was the reason why, from the last council meeting to this council meeting, if those avenues have been exhausted and there's not any hope to do that, then we have to take the next step. There are some notice requirements that have to be done, and then we can proceed to, um, including potential demolition.
Okay. I mean, this is 32 years. We've been looking at this, and now it's, it's deplorable. Um, and I guess it's just understanding what the timeframe is and if it's something that we can be updated on.
If, yeah, if you leave your name and number, you know, save it, leave your name and number with Jenny, I would say, um, I will, and others will keep you apprised of what the status is and what we're doing.
I mean, you're fair, Mr. Connors.
What's that?
To be fair.
Yes.
He has not attempted, like you're saying, like you wanna get someone to reach out there.
Well, I understand that.
In 30 years, I've not seen him put a half hour of his time.
I didn't know it was for 30 years.
Yes.
Okay. Or a half dollar of his.
I, I didn't know it was for 30 years.
Into the outside of the town.
It's a disgrace. Yeah.
It's a disgrace to the town, to his neighbors, to the residents, it's a disgrace.
Well, certainly.
And my most important thing is it affects the value of my house.
Absolutely.
I don't have a mansion, but I take care of it, I maintain it, and it's disrespectful to his neighbors.
Well, I'm aware of the 30-year history involved with it.
He's not going to die.
Something recent within the last couple of years that this has been taking place. Um, so exhausting every, you know, empathetic, um, you know, position we could take, that having obviously come to light, that we have to take the next step, unfortunately. But if you provide a contact information, we will, we'll work hand in hand.
Thanks for coming out and sharing that with us. I tried to make contact personally with him.
People avoid every aspect of making contact with your neighbors, honestly.
I went to the house.
They're bizarre.
He was home, I'm assuming, 'cause his vehicle was there, uh, but he would not answer.
There's birds aside dogs that sit on top, like, of his roof, and ladders hanging off and tarps, and it's just, it's, people don't believe that someone lives there. It's actually embarrassing now.
I've seen abandoned houses in better shape than that, and someone lived there.
I have.
We entertain a lot. It's just horrible.
I have the issue with the safety factor, most of all, uh, not just for him in particular, but also the surrounding neighborhood.
That goes up, yeah, it's, yeah. And I don't even know what the back is. I know that it's been looked at.
It's worse than.
And my mother-in-law said, could you go the next door? She says, yeah, she, she saw the side there. So, okay. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks for coming out.
Thank you.
Who's in the building?
Blue again, Paul Paul Money, 20th Ward Drive, Southern New Jersey. Has anybody called the Board of Health or OSHA on that house? I mean, I called Senior Service. Well, I had a problem with a neighbor years ago. My first house had a trailer in the backyard, and there was, there was a certain number there. I called the Board of Health, they got rid of the trailer. Just saying. That and me being a construction worker, there's tons of other violations over there for anybody who lives in that building.
Given that wouldn't apply, that wouldn't apply to the person that lives there.
Um.
Occupational, occupy, it's occupational.
Right.
Occupational, so the Board of, this is beyond the Board of Health. Um, what Councilmember Dupree is attempting to do is to make sure that there's some other path that we could take. We can condemn it. We have the power to do that. We don't need the Board of Health or anything else like that. We wanna get services to the individual, including notifying Adult Protective Services so that this person's personal. Just like OSHA, the bill come out and evaluate and make sure the person's getting the services they need.
Um, the safety signs, I put up one safety sign in Paris Cove.
Okay.
I had to get permission from one of the neighbors that it's on the end of our, our legal. The next one is your legal, Sam. Um, I'm waiting for him. He won't be available till end of June. So I'll go over there and install for him, and then we have another one, um, that's gone out on tripod. Um, good job with the pothole repairs. Looks pretty good. I came back from a convention in Wildwood, and everything's paved over. Wildwood's away, I, I heard about a horrendous accident. And I, I don't know if you guys remember, um, Brian, my, you know, Sam, I submitted a field drawing of that area when they started building that neighborhood. And I don't know that a traffic light would have helped this individual, 'cause he was in a medical emergency, but I'm still pushing for that traffic light. I don't know if you guys are, but especially when you have state police barracks. Our neighborhood, the new neighborhood, summertime traffic, even if they only use it, it's a traffic light they use in the summer only, just to slow everybody down. It would be good for the businesses in town, plus safety. I know all about safety and whatnot. So that's all I have to say.
Okay.
Have a good day.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I'm gonna wait until we say everybody else has a chance. Mr. McAndrew.
Connor, just to pre. I'd like the people to know in the public that at the last meeting, we had an executive session where we thoroughly discussed the problems at 343 Wood Street. I have taken every legal step that I can. I contacted the individual, and he said to me, he's tried to get a contractor, but nobody will touch it. And I don't blame a contractor not touching it. So that's where it leads to, and it's a time-consuming effort, and it has to be done legally. That's what the whole of this, it's not a walk and say, here's a picture of it. If I put it into court's hands, you got a year and a half, two years. That's because of the deals aren't helping. But I took a picture there yesterday morning, and I saw Pete Lovey, and he said, he saw you over there, I'm sorry, that, he did see you over there, but he was scraping the tar paper all that.
Oh, I wasn't over in his house.
Yes, well, I'm just saying, he saw.
Oh, I forgot about that.
But anyhow, he was trying. He can't get anybody. His son cannot help him. So that's where we are. I, I don't put it in anybody's hands, but I try to keep the information, watch what I can legally do.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, all right. We know you've been working on this for a long time, and.
I took a picture there yesterday morning.
It's extraordinary.
You see me over there, I cry.
Oh, absolutely. I mean, Mr. McAndrew's been working hand in hand with us, absolutely.
All right, we're done talking about this now.
Yes.
One more thing?
Yeah. Jim, Jim, when we were speaking, that wasn't a date at you. Oh, no, 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 I'm just, I'm just. You know, what comes out of these conversations doesn't come from here, it comes from the sidewalk. Oh, they said this, oh, they said that, oh, they did that. That's where I'm trying to get the, get it right to the facts.
Right.
Only the facts. I don't want that to be your work, but.
No, we appreciate it.
All right. All right.
Yeah, I, yeah.
Does anyone else who has not spoken this evening have something to say?
Darce. Wow.
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 Happy Fourth of July, right, Darce?
Yeah.
Happy Fourth of July.
Very good.
All right, Karen, the motion is six, not seven, six.
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 Sorry, yes, six.
Six of them, oh, I wrote seven down. I better put six. That's an important.
It is, thank you.
All right, is there any other? Last change.
I have not, I.
Move the clothes with public porches.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second to, uh, close public porches. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We're not opposed. All right, and.
Motion, Mr. Connor.
No, Mr. Connors wanted to.
Thank you, Mayor, Members of Council. Um, resident had raised question with regard to an issue regarding the, or of Tucker Dean and the Tucker Dean Volunteer Fire Company, for which there was a matter of litigation. Um, these comments, I imagine, were brought, in fact, were stated as a result of an internet posting, um, that was attributed to the Tucker Dean Volunteer Fire Company. The internet is a great place. It's a great place to exchange ideas and thoughts. It's also an opportunity for individuals to prosecute their claims, uh, however accurate they may be. Um, that's just, unfortunately, the, the world that we live in. Uh, it's important, however, and this particular resident this evening is more interested in what the facts are. sometime in June of 2022, if my dates have it correct. But at that particular time, the municipality had received a report from the Division of Fire Safety, which raised a number of very serious concerns regarding the Tuckerton Fire Company. Among those concerns were violations or not compliance with Division of Fire Safety standards. We had gotten fined as a result of not having fit testing for the members of the fire department, which is essential. And so as a matter of concern, as a result of not only P O S H A violations, but other concerns raised by the division, which said that the leadership was an abysmal failure, if I think I might be paraphrasing, but I think that might be the actual language. There was a concern about liability to the town because the town owns the fire trucks on which they were responding to fires. And so there was a decision made after consultation with myself that we would essentially impound our fire trucks so that they could not ever be used to respond to fires during the pendency of further investigation into these concerns raised by the Division of Fire Safety. And so we entered the premises of the Tuckerton Fire Company, in my opinion, legally, and retained our trucks that were titled to us for their use in responding to fires. Apparently, there were some equipment that was in the truck or affixed to the truck without proper authority of the municipality that was in the trucks when they were retrieved. It was brought to our attention that there was equipment on there. There was a request made to retrieve that equipment. There was emails going back and forth as to retrieving that equipment. We accommodated the retrieval of that equipment on times and dates that were convenient for the borough, but attempted to coordinate that with the individual requesting that this equipment be returned. It was never attempted to be retrieved from the fire trucks. And this led to an ongoing allegation that we were holding equipment, which is not true. We offered to return the equipment, it was not done, and litigation had ensued. There was, amongst the complaint was that the town was responsible for a $70,000 contribution to the fire company, that there was an agreement to give them $70,000. And $70,000 is a, would be an annual contribution authorized by a state statute that allows municipalities to make a contribution from its municipal budget to a volunteer fire company. There's a maximum set, I believe that was probably the maximum at the time. It is not a requirement, it simply says a municipality may contribute to a volunteer fire company, which the borough does, as well as other municipalities that have volunteer fire companies, to supplement what other revenues they may have in fighting fires. One other way to subsidize a volunteer fire company, because $70,000 can only go so far and it's limited, town can't go over that annual contribution. So what the borough of Tuckerton did, said, "Well, we're going to do in addition to that contribution on a regular basis is we'll buy the fire trucks so that you don't have to, and we'll own the fire trucks, and we'll let you use these fire trucks to fight fires in the borough of Tuckerton." So the town was fully vested in the interests of the fire company in fighting fires in the borough of Tuckerton. As a result of this suit, and as part of the complaint, was that we owed $70,000, which was filed long after they were declared or removed as our first responders in June. And we gave the fire company a lot of time in order to cure the deficiencies raised by the Division of Fire Safety. Now, we met with the Division of Fire Safety, and I personally asked, "Don't tell me what is the best practices." I don't want to hear about best practice. I want to know, what are the requirements of the law? What are they required to have in accordance with the law? Not what you would like to see them have, but what's required. And I got a list of what was required by law, by either statutory law, administrative law, or by governor's executive order. And that information was shared with their legal counsel. And in no time was it ever disputed that they were requirements of the law. And we offered a number of days to say, "Show cause as to why the Division of Fire Safety is wrong on the law, and we will take a different posture." That never happened. They refused to meet with the division, they just dug in. We then entered into an agreement with the Tuckerton Fire Company, saying, "If you do all of these things," and that agreement, "If you do all of these things, we will consider restoring to service your first responder status in the borough of Tuckerton." They agreed to that agreement, and they retained the services of an expert to help them fulfill the requirements of the Division of Fire Safety. They retained this individual. They retained this individual because it was purported by them that this individual had previously worked with the Division of Fire Safety and had that expertise and that relationship, that they knew how to get these items compiled in terms of certifications and other aspects required by the division. And they failed to meet that requirement by the date set forth in the mutual executed agreement. And in fact, they extended it even further beyond that date, because we recognized, well, you might have run into a snag. And notwithstanding the extended date, failed to achieve the required filings that we requested from them. We essentially wanted a good housekeeping seal of approval from the division. And we would give them back the trucks, and we would restore them back to first responder status. And so now they sue for $70,000, saying there was agreement. There was no agreement, there's no written agreement. And they said it was an oral agreement, it's not authorized by a statute of frauds, it had to be in writing, there's no agreement. It's a contribution, so as a matter of law, we're not required to give it to them, even though we may have given it to them in the past, it was not required of us. They filed suit saying we damaged equipment, which, we didn't damage equipment, we returned the equipment. There was mold, I think, on the hose, which could be cleaned, but we damaged equipment, which, by the way, that damaged equipment was sold by the Tuckerton Fire Company to the Beach Haven Fire Company. So it was so damaged, they agreed to buy it at specified prices, which we had. They said that our entry was illegal, which it was not. They went to the prosecutor's office to report the illegal entry, the prosecutor's office had indicated that it's not found, that there's nothing there. I believe they went to the attorney general's office and got the same answer from the state attorney general's office. They say in their blog, which has been brought to my attention, that somehow or another, this was, or they're not, it's political. I would just parenthetically say that both the state attorney general and a prosecutor are Democrats, this governing body is known to be Republican, town council is known to be Republican. I don't know how that would be the case, I never knew the attorney general of the prosecutor to ever have a history of any kind of political decision under their tenure. There was no illegal entry, there was no oral argument or oral agreement or otherwise for a $70,000 contribution. We retained our equipment legally, and we de-designated them as first responders legally. They had the control of this situation through the entire time. Alls they had to do was to comply with the requirements of law, and they would be our first responders to death. They failed to do it. And as for the lawsuit, there was an offer of settlement made by the town to the fire company, which said, "We understand that you were in service in the year 2022, from January to June, at which time we de-designated you as first responder. We recognize that. So we'll cut the baby in half, and we'll give you the $35,000 of a contribution for the six months of service that you did provide to the borough of Tuckerton, but we're not going to give you $70,000 because you were not providing service for the second part of the year. And so we will provide that to you." And they rejected that initially. They wanted to hold $70,000, they wanted to air their rights. And then we said, "You know what, we had enough of this. We've attempted to work with this fire company back since 2022, and in spite of all of that, we made an offer of what we thought was fair." Well, we made an offer finally, and you say, "You're going to want to know, why did they accept it at the $35,000?" Because, well, not only don't they win on the merits of the case, but we informed them that they failed to file the proper tort claim notice, which would result in our filing a motion to dismiss their lawsuit, and they would have been out of luck. They wouldn't have gotten $35,000, and they wouldn't have won anything. But if we went to trial, we'd win on the merits. And so if something is so wrong, if it violates their principles, if we're wrong on the law, then let's go to trial. We'll try the case, and it'll get nothing, they'll get nothing. So this is not, question, why wasn't it paid through the insurance carry, some secretive thing? Because it's in the bill list. We paid it as a voucher, it was $35,000 for a contribution that had previously been budgeted to go to them in first place. That's why, they didn't go to an insurance carrier, they gave them the $35,000. And in exchange for that, they dismissed, they dismissed their complaint with prejudice, meaning they could never bring it up again, and they took the settlement. You know why they took the settlement? Because they couldn't win on the merits, and we filed the motion to dismiss, and it was dismissed. The fact of the matter is, there would have been a fee shifting, because under the law, if you offer, have an offer of settlement, and the other party doesn't agree, and it goes to trial and they lose, you pay their attorney fees. And one thing probably bigger than every complaint about the borough's attorney fees, they'll talk about transparency, they'll talk about accountability, but ask them how much they paid their lawyer. How much did they pay their lawyer? They won't tell you that, because they don't have to tell you what we tell you here, because there's no such offer, there's no such disclosure, because it's a private volunteer fire company, duly incorporated. And so it's a lot of baloney, it should have never happened, it didn't have to happen, but it happened because that's the way they wanted it to happen. They controlled the situation through the whole process, right from day one, never wanting to do what they had to do, but spend all their time and energy and complain. And then the question should be asked, what other lawsuits did the Tuckerton Volunteer Fire Company are engaged, to which they have to pay legal fees, which will probably take the $35,000 they got in this contribution, to continue to fund the other lawsuits that they want to, to air their grievances? So now, it's a shame. There are people who want to volunteer for this town to fight fires, and they can. They joined the Parker Town Fire Company, and they can continue to fight the fires here in the borough of Tuckerton. It's sad that it's come to this, don't like to respond to Facebook posts, but it was right that the individual asked a question, I'm responding to that question.
Thank you.
And so hopefully, it's over. It's over. I suspect that there will be some that will continue to put things on Facebook, will continue to paper the town over with open requests that require this clerk and others to go around and assemble documents for this constant witch hunt. And then say that they're concerned about the welfare of the people of Tuckerton, could be further from the truth. We would win on the merits. They lost it, they did the wise thing, to the advice of their attorney, take what the town is offering you in your best interest. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Connors, I would like to add one thing. So the people and the citizens of Tuckerton have realized that it is not the fire company webpage, it is a private, and I repeat, it is a private person that is posting under Tuckerton Fire Company. So when you see Tuckerton Fire Company, it is not the membership of the fire company, and that comes directly from a current member of the fire company. It's one individual that controls 100% of the posts on that page, and that individual also runs the Little Egg Incident Alert page. And you'll read commentary where that individual also badmouths all the squad, first aid squads in the area, and they put a lot of personal commentary in on unfortunate situations, and they mislead the public. So that one individual, remember, runs both those Tuckerton Fire Company page, which is not the fire company at all, it's a personal page ran by one individual, and I'm pretty sure that you can figure out who that one individual is, even though a couple of people will post under their name. But when you see a post from Tuckerton Fire Company, it is that one individual that's posting. He doesn't put his name to it, for obvious reasons, but he will post under the Tuckerton Fire Company.
And one more, Tom. While I'm on the roll. There was a fire alarm that went off at the fire station, Tuckerton Volunteer Fire Station, firearm. There was a concern raised by individuals hearing that fire alarm. There was initial confusion as to whether that was a fire in the borough of Tuckerton. It was a false alarm, okay? How it was activated, why it was activated, I don't know. Those things can happen. Not the first time. And so the concern was brought to my attention about this fire by the individuals from the Parker Town Fire Company that are first responder. Now you can imagine, there may be people who drop what they're doing to get to the Parker Town Fire Company to be ready to respond, to find out that this was an active, it wasn't an active firearm. To avoid confusion, a letter from myself was written to the president of the Tuckerton Volunteer Fire Company, indicating that this incident had occurred, and essentially saying that, "In order to avoid false alarms in the future, in since you're no longer a first responder, not only to the borough of Tuckerton, but for any municipality in a state in New Jersey or anywhere that I'm wearing, deactivate it." You know, just deactivate, to avoid false alarms. We don't want people trying to get someplace, put them in an unsafe position, or even just a matter of inconvenience. A month later, I get a response from an individual from the Tuckerton Fire Company, which I'm not aware holds any particular author, but it wasn't from the president, and during the period of convalescence from the president of the fire company, who was apparently sick for 30 days or whatever, I get a response, an email, 10 points, why they're not activating. The Tuckerton Fire Alarm sent the Great Fire in 1979, I don't have it in front of me, I can make it available to you. 10 points. An accident alarm is not a false alarm. I've never heard that one before, it's a false alarm. Accident alarm's not a false alarm. They've had issues with Verizon, this, that, and the other. None of it was relevant to the request that was made, except for the last 10th point. We're not going to disarm it. Start with that. That's your position, that's your position. What benefit is being served by allowing this to continue? Deactivate it. If you're going to do something later on, you're going to be a fire company somewhere else, then you can reactivate it or something, but this is the kind of obstinance in, you know, putting up the walls all the time. Doesn't help anybody. All's invited is a simple request. All's a made is a simple request and nice to respond. There we go. Nonsensical, irrelevant information just to tell me that, well, we're not gonna do it anyway. So, you know, it's, it's tiring, it's a pain in the neck. But the governing body made the right decision and it was a decision that wasn't easy to make. It was hard to do, but it was within their control the entire time.
So that, that was, because the post just literally trashes the borough with the police department. It just goes on.
Well, there are allegations of cover-up. Allegations of cover-up.
That's what he does.
Body worn cameras are conducted in accordance with the standards and directives of the state attorney general's office. If someone has a complaint about a cover-up where somebody's doing something wrong, particularly the police department, you go to the O'Shannon Prosecutor's Office, you go to the state attorney general's office, that's where these things are investigated. To simply raise them, you know, it's just not of anybody's benefit.
There's no way to stop it, right?
No. First Amendment, First Amendment. Correct.
And so you'll say, "Does this really happen?" I'm like, "And that's what, I don't follow the Tuckerden Fire Department where..."
I'm sorry.
On the one, at the public portion. Yeah. So I'm sorry. But thank you, thank you for explaining.
You stopped the app first.
And starting with the $35,000.
You don't want to move forward.
I'm sorry.
Carry grab, pick grab.
I said no $35,000.
Okay.
Even this, with Connors, one other thing, this was brought up by several individuals in the community and one former firefighter from Tuckerden Borough. There were spec equipment that were included on fire trucks that were intentionally taken off and sold. It was, everybody in the community paid for these vehicles, specced out. So borough property, which is, belongs to every taxpayer in town, had equipment that belonged to the town taken off intentionally and then sold for a profit. I don't know if that needs to go to the prosecutor's office. But it's something that should be looked into because there is equipment that is missing that was supposed to be left on the trucks, that were removed and sold for money. And this one individual who's a past firefighter that I ran into over the weekend said that he was a member when they were taken off and sold. And he, he said he will come forward and talk if we need to.
Well, if the individual feels that there was a crime committed, go to the prosecutor.
But on us as the borough, this offer of setup judgment is in the hands and.
Right.
Done.
That's it, we're done.
Great to see you on the roll, Chris.
Yeah, I know. Yeah, I feel better.
You've been waiting a long time.
Seven years.
Motion to adjourn?
Yes.
Second.
I have a motion, I'm second to adjourn. All of the stakeholders, all of the stakeholders, all right? Thank you very much for coming. Have a good one. I'm sure you're coming up.